And. I'd ask the clerk whether or not we have. We have quorum. We do have quorum. Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. And with that, I'll call this meeting to order. Welcome, Councilman. Deputy Mayor Ross is on his way to Scotland for a wedding, which not his, but somebody else's family. So we wish him well on his travels. He won't be here this evening. I'll read the land acknowledgements. The town of Midland recognizes that it is located on land, which is the traditional and treaty territory of the Anishinaabe people, now known as the Chippewa Tri-Council comprised of Bosley First Nation, Rama First Nation, and the Georgina Island First Nation. This territory is within the pre-Confederation Treaty V and Treaty 16, and included within the Williams Treaties from 1923. The town of Midland recognizes that it is located on land, which is the traditional territory here on Wendat and the historic homelands of the Métis, and that our town is a home to a large and diverse community of indigenous peoples. I'd also ask you to join me in a moment of silent reflection. Thank you very much. At this point, I'll ask if there are any declarations of pecuniary interests. Seeing none, then we'll move. I need to. I have a motion here, rather moved by Councilor Gordon and seconded by Counselor Cunningham. I'll see Counselor Cunningham. Is she in attendance, Madam Clerk? No. Out of the moment. Moved by Counselor Maine, or seconded rather by Counselor Maine. That the contents of Special Meeting Council for August 10, 2022 be approved. Comments or questions with respect to the agenda? Oh, I see Counselor Cunningham has arrived. Thank you. Welcome, Counselor Cunningham. Any, no comments or questions in all in favor, please? Thank you. That is approved. Next on the agenda is item five, deputations. And this evening, we have Mrs. Anne McCrimmon, who's the new executive director of the Economic Development Corporation of North Simco, who will be presenting to council. The item in question is a request for release of second payment of funds for 2022 budget. Ms. McCrimmon, welcome.
Thank you. Excuse me.
Good. I should remind you, you have 10 minutes.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much, Mayor Strathern and Council. My name is Mrs. Anne McCrimmon, and I'm the executive director for the North Simco Economic Development Corporation. The purpose of my presentation today is to inform Council of EDCNS's 2020 work plan for Q3 and Q4 and to request the endorsement of Midland Council to release the second payment of funds for EDCNS in the budgeted amount of $83,267. Also, I'd like to acknowledge in the chamber and council chambers that my board member, Adrian Savados, is here to join me. Next slide, please. That's the last slide. There we go. Thank you very much. So what I'd like to do is, for a bit of my background information, I'd like to give you some information about myself. I graduated from Merson University, where I studied international trade as a certified international trade professional. I graduated from Algonquin with honors in marketing and communications, and I am a certified business retention and expansion counselor. Accomplishments that have included is that I participated in two FCM international municipal programs to Cambodia, working with government officials, local municipal politicians, senior staff, and business associations, small owners, to create and execute a tourism strategy to connect, excuse me, rural communities from Baton Rouge to Cemri. At Omafra, I identified sites, sourced clients, and opened the first Whole Foods in Toronto. Initiated the YPQ marketing plan with the airport team in Peterborough as an investment attraction piece, as well as working in partnership with the airport to deliver the annual airport summit, which had over key, over 100 key industry leaders in the aerospace industry attend. We were awarded one of 10 national programs to work with First Nations and three local municipalities in the county of Peterborough and the set through the SETI program. And at PKD, I applied for and was awarded $500,000 for programming and product development, such as the Core to Farm Fresh Program and the FDI Program for the aerospace and the clean tech sectors. Next slide, please. So in Q3 and Q4, I have three points that I'd like to bring to your attention. Today's challenging and involving economic situation makes it particularly important for communities to have access to economic and market data that will allow them to understand what's happening in their local economies and take steps to plan for the future. So before we dive into any complex analysis of potential investment or growth strategies, we need foundational understanding of demographics and economic trends that are affecting our local economy. Within the report submitted, action 1.1, EDCNS is to leverage existing job market data from Stats Canada, our partners in Simco County Workforce Development Board, and other sources to regularly track and monitor, report unemployment trends. EDCNS has joined as a partner to participate with Simco County in doing the county labor market analysis project, which is kicking off next Monday. Next slide, please. Partnerships. EDCNS is embarking on a period of significant change so that, together with our partners, we can navigate the challenges for the future, for the future common economy and leverage the opportunities it is presenting. The importance of reconnecting and developing meaningful partners that will advance Council's strategic number two point in prioritizing economic and community development. Listed only a few partners, EDCNS will be working with on targeted projects. As an example, with the airport, once the land you study is complete, a targeted marketing piece will be created for potential investors. Likewise, with the college, industry, and workforce development board, a marketing campaign will be developed for job seekers that will not only highlight the jobs available, expectations from employers, but from job and new into integrate into the community. One source, one stop, one solution. I have met with the CAO, the airport manager, the airport chair, and I'm meeting with Midland Library tomorrow. And additionally, I've met with the executive director from the Chamber of Commerce. I've met with Workforce Development Board, and I've met with county staff and regional EDOs. There was a request from council for an orient, there was a request, sorry, from staff for the council's orientation package to be completed, which has been done. There's also a request for Midland Community Economic Development Profile to be created, and the data that is required for that and the meeting, I'll be meeting with Midland staff to complete that by October 2022. Next slide, please. Tourism. Now, this is a very busy slide, so I've just updated and highlighted a few things out of the tourism. Tourism's digital advisor, there was $35,000 allocated, and it was launched in June. The features include the cycling campaign, paddling and motorcycling, which will run in September. I provided the new guide that has just come out. The Tourism Relief Fund applied for funding, and each of the municipalities was awarded. They'll receive their bike rack, a bike repair station, and benches on their trails. The Maple for All Seasons, which was featured, will feature five of our local operators. The Indigenous Culture competency training is, the next session is in September. And the visitor's guide, which I said is, is there for you to look at, to receive. And planning has begun on a targeted event for North Simco for the fall. The support of our, next slide, sorry. Thank you. The support of our four funding partners is necessary for the success of economic development growth within North Simco. The funding that EDCNS receives is a valuable investment, and the Board of Directors has directed staff to be transparent and accountable to all our funding partners. As the executive director, I will be reporting to each of the four township councils twice a year, based on the KPIs that are currently being developed. Additionally, I will be meeting with the four CAOs quarterly, and I will be meeting bi-monthly with staff to review economic development issues. I am committed to working with the province and federal government, along with the County of Simco, for investment opportunities across all sectors. This is a suitable time for EDCSN to ignite and work closely with planning departments to identify a steady stream of employment lands for investors and businesses to expand, manage future growth, and to collaborate with business, government, academic institutions, and industry partners. I encourage new ways to grow existing businesses and attract new businesses and investments, and support local economies to access talent, knowledge, resources, and economic conditions for us to thrive. As the executive director of EDCNS, I would like the endorsement of Midland Council to release the second payment of funds to EDCNS for 2022 in the amount of $83,237. This concludes my presentation, Mayor Strathern.
Thank you, Ms. McCrimmon. I'll open the floor to questions from council. See, Counselor Gordon.
I'll try this one. It's happened to me last time, too. Thank you for the presentation. I'm glad you guys are back at the table. I know it's a little odd, you know, coming back and asking for part two, the second tranche of this funding, but one of the reasons why I believe we were reluctant to release it all in one tranche originally is just the lack of reporting and, and metrics. So I see there's a commitment in here at a very high level to figure out what those are going to be and how you're going to report, although the cadence of the reporting is defined here in section four. But what I was hoping to see were what are those metrics? What, what amongst, you know, when you met with the board, you've had all this time to do that. I would have loved to see just some kind of, you know, even a sample dashboard of here are the things that we in the board have decided are probably the best KPIs that can show the return on investment. I don't want to use too many TLA three-letter acronyms here, but the, that can show the return on investment for the EDCNS and continue to justify why it makes sense to continue having a local entity like EDCNS when we have the county's EDO already. So, and I'm not going to ask you to try and defend the existence of EDCNS. However, in, at a high level, and I would suspect for the next council's budget in the fall, those KPIs, I was really hoping to see them in your report or in the presentation today so that we could get an idea of what are the measurables? How are we going to say that the EDCNS is having a measurable impact on our community for the tax money that funnels into it? So is, does such a, do the KPIs exist yet? Are you still banging this around at the board level, and when might we see them?
Ms. McCrimmon.
Yes, to the mayor. Thank you so much for your, your question. Absolutely, we are working on those KPIs. I have had one initial meeting, which was my AGM. And this is, I have my next board meeting next week. I have spoke with your CAO on developing the KPIs. For me, in my background, it is extremely essential that there is transparency and that there is accountability to our funders. So I commit to you that those KPIs will be delivered and reviewed and presented to council before the end of 2022, which was when I would be doing my second. It would be my second report of if it was two years. So I will be doing two reports to council a year. So this one would be 2022, final report on the results of Q3 and Q4, of which the KPIs would be presented.
Counselor Gordon.
Cursed. Oh, there it is. Okay. Thank you for that, just in follow-up. So I'm, I'm satisfied here. I mean, you're new in this role. There appears to be a lot of rebuilding going, you know, big change of the board. I, I don't see any reason to withhold the second tranche of funding right now. So even though I don't really have what I was hoping to see, I'm taking on your word and with your background and expertise that it's coming, and that either we or the next council will see that, and that'll make it a whole lot easier the next time the funding request comes in, because there will be something measurable and a way for us to demonstrably show to the community this tax money that we're spending, propping up EDCNS's work, is actually producing these results, and they are listed here. So thanks for the presentation today, and I won't be opposing releasing the funding. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Maine. Just push the button. You have to turn it on. It's on the side there.
It is on. Oh, there we go. Hello, good to see you in person. We had a great little chat with you at the Housing Committee. I apologize for interrupting your presentation with Spice Girls. I was just listening before I got here. Very apt. So say that you will always be there, I guess is a good, appropriate expression for the EDS, CDS. With a new role comes new ideas and new perspectives. Looking at the organization, that's the one thing that we've seen, even the pendulum switch, even before the pandemic, towards outside investment and new growth with the pendulum swish, shifting back towards business retention and expansion. And that might be, EDCNS is the home for that type of initiative, business retention and expansion. As, you know, as the expression goes, if you could save one factory from closing, that's worth more than bringing in a new factory. Not necessarily, that is a strong argument, but I was just curious, with everything changing with the pandemic and, you know, a lot of uncertainty, global economic uncertainty, how does EDCNS adapt and change? Obviously, the tourism thing is going to be a huge focus. We got that lined up. That looks fantastic. But how do you see the roles and responsibilities of EDCNS evolving, adapting, pivoting, and coming up with a new reality of what modern economic development looks like, which has changed from three years ago? Thank you.
Ms. McCrimmon.
Yes, through the mayor. Thank you very much for your question, Counselor. This is such an interesting time, and it is. The key is community development. So there's economic development, and there's also community development, and now the two shall meet. And within that is so many, past economic development practices have been to attract a new company with jobs. If we look internally at all the companies that we have, you'll be surprised how many new jobs there actually are, and the opportunities to upskill those current workers to advance them, to have what's needed and required, to even expand their knowledge, which again, you know, provides really valuable employment within our area. One thing that I've been looking at is, I've been looking at doing an analysis, and it's not a study, it's just an analysis on the, I call it the blended workforce. So the blended workforce, when I look at the demographics in this community, the, the, not the older worker, but the worker that has working part-time or has retired, has all this knowledge and has all this expertise. And if we work with the high school, the college, to bring them together, it's not a mentorship program, but it's more of a work share type of program. So again, these are the sort of new ways of thinking that it's a retention, but it's a different type of a retention. It's a business retention, but it's also a workforce retention.
Anybody else with a comment or question for Ms. McCrimmon? I have a question for you, Ms. McCrimmon, if I may. Mentioned the library. The library has a makerspace and trying to marry industry with the makerspace and the the programming with the library. So the library has preschool programming, and it goes right up through high school. And the makerspace basically teaches skills in 3D printing, laser cutting, and so on. And it strikes me that there's an opportunity here for EDCNS to bring industry and the library together, where you as a window or a space to start transferring knowledge in, particularly in STEM activities and in trades. And if you look at the UK curriculum for, for coding, it starts at kindergarten, goes right through, the curriculum actually goes right through university. And there they, they started as a game, and it starts to change people's minds. So do you see an opportunity here to actually bring a cross-generational approach to getting people interested in STEM and particular blue collar trades?
Yes, thank you for your, your question, Your Worship. It's, it's so interesting, because I actually met with our agriculture community in one of the other townships. And we went right back to the youth. We went right back to that attraction piece. If you go to the library and it's a makerspace, is it a community hub? Is it a makerspace? Is it, you know, is it an innovation center? So let's define what it is, and then bring the correct industry with the youth to ensure that we develop very simplistic programs. So that's what's going to keep the mind active, is it's a simplistic program. And also, if we look at women and young girls, if we look at new Canadians and their opportunities and the expertise they could bring from our community, there's definitely an opportunity there, and I really look forward to going to the library tomorrow. And I'm glad I, it's actually tomorrow that I meet with Trish.
Thank you. And I just have one other question. That is, what you attended the Housing Committee meeting, and we talked about housing as a limiting factor in terms of business retention, Counselor Maine, rather, spoke a moment ago about business retention and expansion, and what do you see, as they say, the top two, three things that are impacting retention expansion in this area? Locally, a geographic area?
Correct. Thank you for your question, Your Worship. I would suggest that as in every community right now, it is workforce. It is housing, the two tied to each other. But I would suggest that the third thing is, is that are we, what makes us unique? And what differentiates this area, other than tourism, into this community? And how do we, how do we bring that forward? So, you know, I think the, the third would be that whole uniqueness piece. What is our brand? What is going to make us North Simco versus the county as a whole?
Thank you. And I just, Counselor Arshonsky, please.
Hi. Oh, thank you. Welcome, and thank you for your presentation. I was kind of inspired by the library talk there. I work at a local factory and be happy to help bridge the gap between the trades and the library, if you need some help with that. Just wanted to thank you for your presentation. Thank you for coming here and introduce myself. Thanks again.
Thank you, Counselor. Last call for questions for Ms. McCrimmon. Well, thank you very much. Very enlightening. Welcome to EDCNS. I know that in response to what Counselor Gordon was asking, county very much sees a role for EDCNS at North Simco. Their, their remit is a little broader, but they also have worked closely with, and in fact, poached a bunch of previous staff from EDCNS who are now working at county. And of course, they still have an interest in a local interest, so I suspect you'll have a, a good relationship with them. So thanks again.
Thank you very much.
So council, I have a motion here. It's moved by Counselor Shewski, seconded by Counselor Post. The council received the report from Mrs. McCrimmon, Executive Director of Economic Development for EDCNS, dated August 10, 19, or sorry, 2022, wrong century. And the council approved the request to release the second payment of funds for EDCNS budgeted in 2022 in the amount of $83,237. Comments or questions with respect to the motion? I see no comments or questions, therefore I'll call the question, all those in favor. Thank you, council, and Ms. McCrimmon. You have your guns. Congratulations. At this point, we're into reports, and I'm going to ask the clerk if we could move the agenda item 5.3, 6.3, beg your pardon, extension of conditions of draft plans, subdivision forward, as we have people in the audience who have a particular interest in this item?
I believe with councils concurrent, you can.
Counsel, if you have any objection, please raise your hand. I see a couple thumbs up, but seeing no objection, then we have a report from planning. It's item 6.3. Print's too small, and I'll put my glasses on. Report is CSR 2022-53, Extension of Conditions of Draft Plan of Subdivision Approval, file number MD-T-0119, Bayport Village, Caitlin Phase 2, 640 Bayport Boulevard. The report is basically deals with draft plan extension. The the, the motion, I'll read the motion afterwards. I think, Mr. Far, do you have a presentation around this?
Three, Ms. Mayor, no, I don't have a presentation, but I can speak very generally to the content of the report.
If you, if you wouldn't mind, please.
Sure. So town received the draft plan extension request from Caitlin Corporation for the Bayport Village Phase 2 development. Probably back in March, staff reviewed that extension request. It was for three years, and staff have provided three-month extension. Staff provided this extension in order to do a number of things. First, allow Caitlin Corporation as consultants to organize their approach to the file and come forward with kind of accurate estimate of the remaining amount of time necessary for them to fulfill conditions. The conditions for this project were originally approved by council in 2019. Their three-year period was coming to an end, and necessitated the extension. In addition, staff have added a number of conditions that are responsive to matters that have arisen over the course of the three-year approval period. And that includes a number of matters related to communications with buyers, some logistical issues around the time that's expected that this development will take to come to fruition. The need for transparency for the public who've shown an increasing interest in this, and not the least of which are the buyers who have purchased units within this development, particularly the street townhouses. Staff were mindful of a number of purchasers who have bought townhouses within a block that were conditionally approved by the town back in 2020. Um, this was a, a block that Caitlin then went on to construct. However, Caitlin's unable to convey the title of those townhouses to the purchasers until the lands that those townhouses sit on are registered. So basically, to take possession of the property. This is a situation that Caitlin understood very clearly. The I guess you could call it the delays in arriving and timely fulfillment of the conditions have meant that those lands can't be registered. So one of the conditions that's been added here is a condition, and it's a condition that refers back to refers back to the content of a previous staff report on this matter. And that is that Caitlin register or gain final approval for those lots within that block before any other part of the the subdivision is is approved. So having sent out a path for this, this registration of this block, basically to free it, I guess, from any of the encumbrances associated with the rest of the application. Staff introduced that condition, but we also set a path in the report back in May for Caitlin to to basically file the necessary documents that would allow these lands to be registered. Caitlin didn't file those documents in the period of time that they'd indicated they were hoping to. They were, and I think staff were also hoping to see those documents filed shortly after that report back in May. More recently, partly through the assistance of the facilitation of the town's solicitor, Caitlin's begun to attempt to file those documents. So staff are in possession of of some materials that have been provided by Caitlin. Not all of the materials that have been requested. Caitlin's well aware of the expectations of staff. Through our solicitor, the communications have gone back to Caitlin advising them of what is missing. And staff are are frankly, we're anticipating bringing these matters forward as soon as we can on receipt of those materials. So as recently as yesterday, we've spoken to our solicitor about what is is further required in order to advance the associated approvals. As it happens, just to speak to those approvals briefly, a council has given staff a wide range delegated authority for many of the matters that are required to be approved, except for the holding removal, which is a is a kind of more of an administrative exercise, but council has the approval to lift the hold. So we're basically taking steps through the lawyer to gain the required information that we need to advance this to a conclusion. And we're preparing ourselves as though those map as those as though we have those documents in our possession. And essentially, that's how we're going to proceed. So I I've mentioned this before in staff reports around the buyer's block twenty seven. Staff are well aware from communication with them of the great amount of difficulty this situation has caused them personally. And we're mindful of that in moving forward and trying to be attentive to this and move as expeditiously as possible. And we have set a path. It has yielded some response from Caitlin, which was not the case previously. And I am hopeful and we are moving with the expectation that this will be coming forward at the nearest possible council date. And I say the nearest possible council date to Caitlin agreeing to provide the necessary information through our lawyer and and the gaining council's approval.
Thank you, Mr. Far. I see Mr. Denos on the line as well. Mr. Deno, do you have anything to to add to that?
Thank you, worship. Can you hear me? I got him summarize the the situation very clearly. And again, you know, to all the people, especially for the people with the built townhouses, we want to certainly make them feel like they have been heard. I know we've responded to many of them directly on this situation. We we continue to remain optimistic that, you know, we're making headway on on working with Caitlin on specifically those those four townhomes. It is a complicated development when you include all the elements that they're trying to include. So we are continuing to try to support them on that as well. But certainly we're trying to get the homeowners into the townhomes as as quickly as possible. Our lawyer, again, who who is being used because, you know, that is a process that that Caitlin wanted wanted to use as we went through part of this. And it's, I think it's been helpful, to be honest. I think having Mr. Engel and their representatives be a third party and provide their input on what is reasonable in terms of dealing with a complicated development like this has been helpful. And again, I think progress is being made. So we're certainly want to be optimistic with this. We're looking at the details that Caitlin has provided. Hopefully, it will be sufficient to allow it to to continue and certainly will be giving it our full attention.
Thank you, Mr. Deno. I think at this point, I'm going to read the motion into the record and then we can counsel. A big pardon. Sorry, councillor Cunningham, I didn't see your hands.
That's perfectly all right. Thank you, your worship. If I can always speak after it was read into the record. My question, though, was, first of all, thank you so much for the work that's gone into this and this report to clarify things. And the number of times staff has responded to each of us about the concerns we've heard. And also appreciate that this didn't get a three year extension. That would have been dramatically disturbing, I think. The one question I have is, are we using every tool at our disposal or is our optimism around this, holding back any tools that could get those four homes decided to tweet? Or is there other tools that we should be aware of that could be applied to make sure that that is expedited? Because I know this is has been a terribly painful process for many people. And I appreciate the three month. I appreciate that condition being put in. And I'm not saying that we're not working hard. I'm just wondering if there's anything that any other tool that we should be aware of that could induce this conclusion as quickly as possible that isn't already in play.
Thank you, councillor. Mr. Far, would you care to address that?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councillor Cunningham. In our discussions with our solicitor, we very clearly understand that this is the top priority. And our solicitor is well aware that that whatever options are required to be sought here, we're reviewing and moving things forward as quickly as we can.
Councillor Cunningham, follow on.
I don't know if that answers whether we're using the biggest sledgehammer possible at this time or not. I think it's the the plain English way of of asking that. I'm not sure if that is a yes, but it sounded like a very legal, gentle answer to my question that I didn't quite get the full answer there.
Mr. Far.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, councillor Cunningham, a staff are exploring every option. And I don't think there's any confusion or lack of clarity or alternative approach that the staff would take other than the one that's in front of us. We we understand the situation. It's taken us quite a while to bring Caitlin to a position where it's seriously considering advancing this matter. And I can't say that they've been in that position and for a prolonged period of time. So I can assure I guess council that we're in a better position on this than we've been, at least since I've been with the town over the last year. While we're standing the efforts by staff to bring this matter forward. So we're much closer. I think this is a viable option that we're pursuing and and it is the most expeditious. And in our our solicitor is under no other kind of direction other than that we need to make this work and bring it forward as quickly as possible. Certainly, staff are equally motivated to seek those solutions and press those solutions through through the solicitor who's who's very experienced in these development matters. And I believe that that we've exhausted whatever other opportunities might be available or at least excluded those in favor of the most viable approach.
Thank you, Mr. Far.
Thank you. I do appreciate that.
So councillor Gordon, would you allow me to read the motion and then we can continue the discussion? Thank you very much. So it's moved by councillor Shesky, seconded by councillor Maine, the staff report CSR dash two zero two two dash five three, extension of conditions of draft plan of subdivision. Approval file number MD dash T dash zero one one nine Bayport Village, brackets Caitlin. Phase two address six forty Bayport Boulevard dated August the 10th, 2022 be received for information. Council questions for staff on this matter? I'm sorry, you're not allowed to participate, sir. It's not a public meeting. But I can I can almost guess what some of your questions might be. So we'll hopefully council will address those for you. Councillor Maine.
Thank you. So usually I always vote against draft plan extensions just on the principle of the matter. But this this time around, obviously, it makes sense to continue with this path. They've considerable reconfiguration of the road network, which has created some of these additional blocks and whatnot, which has led to this draft plan. Can you just walk us through the planning process here just very quickly in terms of what are the other things Caitlin that we're dealing with? So this draft plan, if we extend it, we want them to deliver on the conditions. And the next step of draft plan is to move to a plan of subdivision. Or I'm, I believe there is also a unique situation with one of the blocks is that once we move towards plan of subdivision, some of these subset blocks can move forward without the formal plan of subdivision for phase two, or is there multiple planning processes here for some of these subset of developments? It just getting a little confusing with some of these subblocks, block twenty, block forty, block twenty seven, whatnot. Thank you.
Mr. Far.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, councillor Maine. So I I try to make this sort of simple as I can. When a draft plan of subdivision is approved, what council approves is a drawing that shows the proposed lots where, say, townhouses or tennis blocks or single detached homes or apartments might appear. And council also approves a list of conditions. So you have a drawing and you have a set of conditions. So that that's a signal to the developer that they, if they're able to fulfill the list of conditions that councils approved. And this list of conditions varies. It can vary from, like, in this case, what was originally approved was forty three in some municipalities goes up to a hundred, hundred conditions. Um, so then what happens is the developer provides submissions to try to clear each of the conditions on that list, which, once all the conditions have been fulfilled, an agreement is prepared and that is the developer binding to those conditions that they're going to follow through and do what it is they said and all the things they said about stormwater, about the design of the development, the traffic, all those pieces of it. Once all those materials have been submitted, reviewed and approved by staff, the subdivision agreement is prepared and executed by them. They've given us whatever money, security is required, provided whatever legal drawings are required, a final approval is issued. Once that final approval is issued by the municipality, the developer can take that plan to the registry office. And then what happens is those lots are created. So what your question also spoke to is, well, what does that mean? So a lot for a single detached home in a subdivision, an approved registered plan of subdu- subdivision entitles the builder to build a single detached home. If it's a block, like a block of townhouses, so a block of townhouses or a block of land that an apartment building sits on, they require site plan approval. So sometimes, though, when you're involved in site plan, you get into kind of the nitty gritty details of where visitor parking is, is one example that appeared in the report or how a block is configured. Sometimes there are details that the developer didn't anticipate. So what we have in this case is we have a draft approved plan with a bunch of lots, roads, blocks. We have conditions that they're trying to fulfill. And at the same time, in this case, the developer has also filed site plan applications for what would be the future blocks where the apartment buildings and townhouses are shown. Some of those site plan matters have triggered some additional questions that need to be sorted out. It deals with lot lines and it and it causes staff and the developer to have to go back to that drawing that showed the lots and the blocks and make corrections on that drawing in order to facilitate what they want to do on the site plans for the apartment building and the townhouses. This developer wants to get registration of the entire plan. That means to create the blocks that these apartments and townhouses are going to sit on. Um, basically, so that they can go right into site plan rather than break it into parts. You can take a subdivision, say, well, this piece of the subdivision is a little more complicated. So what we're going to do is we're going to try to register the part that's less complicated. And this is critical to this subdivision because it's within the power of the applicant, the owner in this case, to break this subdivision up into pieces and advance them on a phased basis. So the stuff that is simpler and easier to deal with, get that squared away, get it registered, create the blocks, get your approval and build. However, and that's that is the case for portions of this site. There are portions that are easier than others. And there are, there are some that are more complex and require more time. Because they've cast the net to include both the easy portions and the complex portions before they register and get full approval for this subdivision, it's kind of slowing things down. A part of the content of this report and our communications also with the developer are to find a common understanding of what's left, what what remains to be done and how long that is going to take to be complete. From a staff standpoint, we haven't seen consistent messaging from the the owner as to what would be realistic expectations based on what staff know from speaking with agencies, in particular, in this case with with hydro. So because there are those complex pieces attached to this approval, like I say, it's it's slowing down the simpler parts of the subdivision. They still have to fulfill the related conditions and there are still some challenges there, even if they chose to phase. But those technical matters that are associated with the more complex parts of the subdivision are frankly slowing things down. So it's going to be something that we would hope that in reviewing both the draft plan conditions and this public information report, the developer would review and consider and make some frankly basically just logistical kind of common sense decisions about what they're going to do and return with a realistic plan. If it's going to include everything, fine, then we'll all know that it's going to take X number of months for the subdivision to reach final approval. Alternately, they may decide, hey, that part of the subdivision is slowing things down and we'd like to advance with this other piece. In either case, staff are ready to work with the developer kind of in a practical way through these matters so that we can clear the conditions, we can enter the agreement and issue the final approval and get these things registered. That's basically as 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 simple as I can make it. There there are some additional complexities in this file that frankly I don't think are, I think it's counterproductive delving into them. I think by my answer and by the content of the report, I'm reflecting to council and staff are serious, practical minded and want to see this thing advanced, move forward and finalized. That's frankly what we want to do.
Sorry. Thank you, Mr. Far, Councillor Maine, follow on.
Thank you. Yeah. So I have, this has gone through several iterations of the subdivision. So I apologize for the confusion. So I guess the the answer is that they're looking to register the final rest of it as part of this draft plan extension. So so as you just mentioned, the complicating parts, I guess, block thirty four, the larger rise buildings, those planning considerations are being included as part of this draft plan, which is adding some complication. I had assumed that that was a later phase, phase three or four or whatever. But now that you made those comments, I certainly understand it, much more appreciate the understanding of the planning process and the draft plan of this. more appreciate the understanding of the planning process and the draft plan of this very complicated development. So thank you for the clarification on that.
Thank you, Councilman Maine, Councilor Gordon.
Thank you. So if what I just heard you explain, and I appreciate that explanation, I actually found more clarity in that even than the the report, which is also very fulsome, is that Caitlin is requesting effectively an all or nothing position with the town. They want everything approved. They're not, they haven't severed this block twenty seven, I think it is, the one that impacts the four homeowners, one of whom is sitting in the gallery tonight. They haven't agreed to carve that out and deal specifically with those outstanding issues. Instead, they're choosing to take a total approach where those are just some of the many issues and they wanna lump in everything and have it all dealt with and approved at once. Is that what I'm hearing from you or have they? I have some more questions, but have they agreed to slice and dice and let's just deal with these four homes, get these homeowners into their homes?
Mr. Far.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, Councilor Gordon. Everything I said in response to Councilor Maine's question deals with everything except for block twenty seven. I'm gonna spend my summary of the content of the report, I spoke to the fact that we had made headway on block twenty seven. We're treating that separately from all the rest of the subdivision. So it's being expedited and separated. The remainder of the subdivision is treated as a whole.
Council Gordon.
Okay, thank you. That's good. I'm I'm glad. So the next thing is, how many conditions remain unmet? Presumably by Caitlin, because it sounds like the ball is in on their court right now, for this block twenty seven to be approved. And is there a list that we can be shared with us again, perhaps if it was in the past, I never saw it nor didn't recognize it for what it was, that can be shared with us and interested homeowners and Caitlin presumably of here are the five or the fifteen or the fifty outstanding issues that have to be met before the town can rubber stamp this and, you know, get this thing so it's registered. Is there a list like that? Does it exist? And where is it?
Mr. Far.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, there are very few conditions that have been cleared. We have we, I mean, we can put together a list that shows what conditions have been finalized. It's it gets less than a handful of conditions. The original conditions that were approved was forty three conditions. Since I've been at the town, which is a year and a bit, none of those conditions have been, no, no further conditions than the conditions that were fulfilled at the time I joined the town have been cleared. And the file, the file record on this is complete as far as staff's review of this of the of clearance of conditions. We have clear correspondence with Caitlin of what remains outstanding. And as the report indicates, many of the conditions that need to be cleared are held up due to uncertainty associated with the status of the draft plan of subdivision, like the lotting, particularly the lotting associated with the apartment building and the servicing of the apartment building. It has a downstream impact on the rest of the drawings. So what you have is kind of a key issue that once it's resolved is likely to release a whole bunch of materials for staff review that will then be reviewed, commented on, and they'll either be responded to by the applicant or they'll be approved by staff. So so all that material exists. And we're awaiting a consolidated submission from Caitlin that addresses the outstanding conditions. We don't have that at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Far, Councilor Gordon. Thank you. So the forty three conditions that you're saying are are those ones that have been met or not met? I I just wasn't clear on that number.
Mr. Far.
About three, Mr. Mayor, out of the forty three conditions, I got off the top of my head, two of them have been met. That would be the Canada Post clearance. It was met, however, there's questions about whether the location of those post office boxes can be accommodated, given all the retro hydro work that's been done on this site. One of the issues that's reflected in the report is the length of time it's taken to get clearance for the design for hydro work on this project. So the other one has to do with a site remediation and there may be a third one, which is a very technical site. It's an environmental clearance issue around any kind of contamination on the site. And and there might be another one that's been fulfilled, but it's the core of the conditions have not been fulfilled.
Mr. Far.
Sorry, and I'm, this almost becomes a conversation because this is really important for me to understand this. So I also heard you say that some of the, it's like a domino effect, some of the conditions that remain outstanding relate to other parts or other phases of this overall site plan approval. And I thought the goal was here that we were trying to isolate just these four homes in this block and deal with the conditions that impact them specifically and unbind that from any other sort of tertiary conditions that relate to the entire site plan. Is that even, is that impossible to do because of some of these or maybe you can just clarify that?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, Councilor Gordon. But I'll just say to be absolutely clear, block twenty seven and the expedited final approval and the requirements for moving that forward is an entirely separate matter from the what I just provided you an answer to. When I talk about clearing the remainder of the conditions, all the forty three conditions, from a staff perspective, there are two approvals here, block twenty seven and then the rest of the subdivision. So everything I just said to you has to do with the rest of the subdivision. So block twenty seven is a relatively straightforward matter, which frankly, given the time it's taken for Caitlin to get to the point where it is right now, willingness to advance the materials to register that block. It it doesn't correspond to the simplicity of what's required to get block twenty seven registered. It's just a matter of we're getting Caitlin to come to the table and register. And now they've provided the documents necessary, or at least a portion of them, for us to advance block twenty seven. Block twenty seven is a separate matter. The rest of the subdivision is encumbered by a bunch of complexities. So it it's it's important that people distinguish that we have made we have a path for advancing final approval of block twenty seven. It requires some additional work by Caitlin. It's simpler and easier. There are some issues there, but much simpler, much easier than the issues associated with the remainder of the subdivision.
Sorry, but you're not allowed to speak in the meeting. I'll have to ask you to leave. If you do, you know the rules. So thank you very much. We will, we will get to, we can have a conversation afterwards if you like. And I'll commit to answering what questions I can. And but in the meantime, this is not a public meeting, so I ask you to respect the rules. Thank, thank you very much.
Okay.
One more question, Councilor.
All right. So this is, this sounds like good news because I understand the report wasn't really dealing with block twenty seven at all. The report is about the whole subdivision and I'm kind of dragging block twenty seven into this. So it sounds like it's simple and there's a small list of a laundry list of to dos by Caitlin so that staff can do what they want to do seemingly, which is approve block twenty seven and get this over with. That is the list that I was wondering if is publicly available. The reason why I'm making this inquiry is because I've been partying to emails back and forth, as I'm sure other counselors have, where Mr. Daniel has, and I will read this verbatim just for clarity, has said, we have submitted one hundred percent of everything Midland would need to finalize block twenty seven. The outside planners agreed, and if you were to ask Bruce Engel, that's the town's lawyer, he would agree too. He's the only one who set up the list of deliverables. The issue is someone needs to take it forward to council, but staff have been sitting, I'm not meaning this to be disrespectful and misreading this, but staff have been sitting on it and doing nothing. Clearly, that's not the case, but I'd ask them if they received the items from Mr. Engel, and if they did, what has happened to them and what's I'm paraphrasing, what is causing the continued delay? Now, this message was from from two days ago. So perhaps since two days ago, have you received new information that would allow this file to advance?
I believe Mr. Far answered that question. They were in conversation with Mr. Engel as late as yes, one o'clock yesterday. Mr. Engel, as I understand it, is going through the information, will understand whether it's complete or not. Is that not the case, Mr. Far?
On Mr. Mayor, that's correct. And through the Councilor Gordon. As I said in my presentation, there are aspects to this file that in my view are counterproductive to, and I'll use the word very specifically, indulge. I can tell you that there is a very clear record as far back as August of twenty twenty one of staff urging Caitlin to advance registration of block twenty seven. As recently as June fifteenth in a letter from Mr. Daniel, Caitlin's position was that block twenty seven could not be registered before the remainder of the subdivision. And I think I've provided you some context on that. And then in addition to that, staff are the ones who set a path out, council's approved the path to move this thing forward in the absence of Caitlin independently advancing the materials necessary for registration, which is completely within their control. Staff, after those efforts and through engagement with our solicitor, have finally managed to elicit some of the materials necessary to advance final approval of block twenty seven, notwithstanding the extensive correspondence and work and detail and discussion and urging from staff on this matter over the last year. And I'm pleased to say that we have, I guess we are closer now than we ever have been to getting some of the materials, most of the materials that we've requested. In this case, there are some remaining matters that have to be concluded by Caitlin. There's some additional materials that have to be provided that our lawyer is is seeking those materials. And it's the, it's the goal of staff to deliver a final approval on this registration to council. But I will say now, and I think I've said it in the reports, and those are all public. There are attachments to this report that I think reflect the efforts that staff have made that we require Caitlin's participation and cooperation. Again, any correspondence from Mr. Daniel on this file has been inconsistent. And as I indicated in the report, there have, has been misrepresentation of facts and the status of the file to the public and to buyers. As I said earlier, these are matters that I don't think it's productive to indulge. But in the context of the question that you asked and in the comments from Mr. Daniel through his letter that you repeated in the public record, I'm providing you that that context and a response. So I'll repeat again that we have most of the materials, our solicitors aware of what remains to be gained. And he's communicating that to council and staff have no confusion that the registration, the final approval of block twenty seven is a high priority for this council.
Thank you, Mr. Far. And I'm going to remind staff that a number of these items are before a land tribunal. And what you say in this forum can be used as part of that tribunal. So I would advise you very strongly to watch what questions you ask, what you read into the record and so on. Mr. Campbell, you wish to comment?
Yeah, I'd just like to build on Mr. Far's comments and one of the questions typically is why only a three month extension? Because that's not a lot of time to to do things, but that's a time that Mr. Far and staff believe it will take if Caitlin comes to the table to get this job done. And that's why we only offered a three month extension at this.
Could you bring your mic a little bit closer? I don't think people can hear you.
The, the, right from the start, okay. It was supposed to be further away with the new mics. I just wanted to build on on Mr. Far's comments. And someone might ask, why only a three month extension to a complex planning file? And we believe that that is sufficient time to bring only block twenty seven forward. I do not believe in Mr. Far's staff. I don't think they'll get the rest of the complex issues dealt with in three months. So the rest of the subdivision is is, there's still a lot of outstanding work. Choosing three months puts the pressure on both parties to get to the table to get it done. And that's why we've done this. We think we can get it done. We think the developer can get it done. And that's why only three months of time is is on the table right now as an extension. And then we'll be back for potentially an extension of the rest of subdivision because I don't think they will, will get everything done in that time. So I think as Mr. Far has commented on, we're ready, we put this three month extension puts the pressure on everybody to get it done.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. And I think it's worth noting that it's very difficult to build a subdivision or approve a subdivision when you don't even have a master servicing agreement with respect to utilities. I'll just make that comment. It was in the report. I just don't know how anybody in there could possibly prove base to without that. And I would also say that it seems somewhat incongruous to me that while Caitlin says they fulfilled all the conditions that they would ask for a three year extension, given that they feel they're that close. So I just, I just think it's just incongruous to me that that would, that would happen, but I'll ask council if there are any other questions for around this this particular matter. Make it short, please.
It actually stems from that master service agreement. Just before the meeting, we were having just a little sidebar here. Maybe it would be worth while elaborating on this. From what I heard, and I meant to ask you more before the meeting started, are these four homes in block twenty seven and presumably other parts of this development, are they actually being serviced with with hydro and gas and water right now without a master service agreement? Or could these residents not even move in because there's no, the lights wouldn't be on? There's no agreement with Tay Hydro or Ontario Hydro?
My understanding, my understanding is the master service agreement is deals with phase two and block twenty seven is a separate matter for which I believe then Mr. Far would, I'll ask you to answer this question. Whether servicing is provided to those buildings.
Through Mr. Mayor, Councilor Gordon, yeah, there's, there's services that are available adjacent to these this townhouse block. And that's what makes this a site easier to register to, as opposed to the remainder of the development, which doesn't have the same sort of approvals. And I'll repeat again that that we've been waiting for this. We've been waiting for these materials from Caitlin. And and now we have some of the materials that we requested. We're working as though we've received all the materials we requested and we're relying on the good work of the town solicitor to complete the package so we can move forward the way that frankly, we have been wanting to move forward and have been on record as wanting to move forward since last year.
Thank you, Mr. Far. With without seeing no other questions, I will call the question. Counsel, do you wish me to reread the motion or are we good to go? So we're good. Thank you. So I'll call a question on favor with the motion. Thank you. That carries. Now, for the folks in the audience, we have some other matters to deal with. I'm hoping they won't take very long. And if you'd like to wait, we can talk to you after. If you wish that to be the case. Okay, so I'll move back to the beginning of the section on reports. We have, and by the way, if you'd like to leave, that's the rest of the stuff has really not much to do of interest for you. Thanks to both of you for for coming and make us, make us a little bit wiser about what's going on at EDC NAS. So next on the agenda, we're back to the beginning of the report section and we have before us a request to reapprove some capital projects. And I'll ask Mr. Campbell if he wishes to speak to that before I read the motion and just the gamble.
I will pass it on to Mitch Sobel to comment on the report.
Mr. Sobel, welcome to the meeting.
Thank you, worship. So yeah, I'll kind of summarize the report. So basically, this report, a lot of it's this report, a lot of it's been driven by the the market and the uncertainty that we've seen and since the pandemic has really started. So we've we've highlighted some projects. We've been in discussions with multiple municipalities. Our procurement team is in a, you know, multiple meetings monthly, kind of seeing what others are doing as well. And and from hearing their feedback, there's a lot of municipalities that are trying to get out in ahead of of some of the procurement train for some of these bigger projects. For a few reasons, we have we have even seen ourselves that if we miss a certain window, that the prices become very erratic and uncertain as well as lead times can be very long. So essentially what we've done is we've had a look at the 10-year capital plan that was included in the 22 budget. And we've looked at the projects that are coming up for the 23 budget. And we've handpicked a select few that require a little bit more attention for us to get going on right now. So we've handpicked those projects for for essentially the reasons that, well, for one, for instance, is is a Queen Street reconstruction. So that's a project. It's a full-on reconstruction project. We saw this last year through the budget process when we did the Palm Beach Road and the Seventh Street reconstruction budgets. We we tendered them Bombay Road a little bit earlier than normal. We received a decent amount of bidders. Price was in a line with what we we typically see. Seventh Street was bid was tendered at a very normal acceptable time to normally tender in in February. And we only saw one bid and over budget, and it's been across the board with all municipalities. So using that example, really, we need to get at these projects early. We need to get these tenders on the market as soon as possible. For the construction projects, we had many other smaller projects in the last year receive no bids or way over budget bids that we cannot proceed with them. So so essentially what we're trying to do is these are must-do projects there. They've been in the 10-year plan. They're not new projects. We've simply adjusted the prices to reflect the current market out there and what they're actually, we believe they will cost. So there is a slight increase over the last, the 22 budget 10-year plan. However, these are not, these are not new projects. They were in the plan already. They are projects that can't be ignored, especially in the sense of the ones with infrastructure that is failing or assets that are failing and aging and that need to be replaced, both in the sense of infrastructure and fleet. So these aren't, these aren't things that we can ignore, and we're just trying to be as economic as possible and and get out early and try to beat some of the market for these projects and and beat some lead times and get some of these materials and equipment when we actually need them.
Thank you, Mr. Sobel. This is your unmute business only with the microphone now. Thanks for that. I'm going to read the motion in and then I'll open it up to the floor. So let's move by Councilor Cunningham, seconded by Counselor Gordon. The staff report CSR 2022-502023 Capital Projects Pre-approval Date at August the 10th, 2022 be received and one, the council pre-approved the 2023 projects and amend the 2022 capital budgets as described in this report. Counsel, you've heard the question, sorry, the question, yes, Coster Maine, you have a question?
Thank you for this report. Very much support of moving forward some of these. If we are going to approve the Queen Street Reconstruction, make sure we get the word out to the residents as soon as possible, give them the heads up as long as we can. I know people greatly appreciate being told when there's reconstruction. They will live through it, but it's good to give them as much heads up as you can. Just a quick question with the Little Lake Garden beds. So we had one resident, one committee member on our act of transportation. He was going to be tickled pink with this because he's been mentioning how the stairs and they need a lot of TLC. So in this bid for this project, we're talking about the garden beds at the Lion Pavilion. And does that include the three tiers of stairwell work? Or is it just going to be the works in and around adjacent to that pavilion? Thank you.
Mr. Sobel or Mr. Campbell?
Thank you, worship, and to Councilman. I'll actually toss this over to Mr. Flannery. That he's leading this specific project within the report, so he can speak a little more educated on this one.
Thank you, Mr. Flannery. Welcome.
Thank you, your worship. Through you to Councilman. The the three-tiered garden there just below the main pavilion is what this is in reference to, as well as the stairs that are just beyond that lead up to the task court. So that would be the scope of this project.
Thank you, Mr. Flannery. Just satisfied, custom mean. Any other questions for staff, Councilor Gordon?
Thanks, I too. I mean, I recognize that it's a little uncomfortable wanting to bind to the next council budget to things we've kind of advanced right now, only the rationale for doing so, I think, was very well laid out in this report. So when I first saw the title, I'm like, nope, that's my default posture. And then I read into the justification. You guys did a good job on it, and it does make good business sense. It was nice to see the Little Lake Garden beds included in this, although, you know, people wouldn't think that that, you know, matches the magnitude of trying to uncombine sewers that are still, you know, combining stormwater and sewage such as Seventh Street. But it is something important because people come to our community every weekend, go to that park, and they look at some of the decrepit neglected, just, you know, call it what it is. It's just neglect. We haven't spent any money or effort on it in a long time, and it shows. So for trying to revitalize Little Lake Park, definitely working on some of the masonry work and taking some pride and care. You know, to contrast the B City no-mo zones that are there, they just add to the look of, you know, neglect at the park right now for a purpose. But when you put it all together, people get a sort of a negative impression of our service levels. So happy to see this go through. I would hope that we do have some fine masonry people and very able-bodied folks in our community who would probably love to bid on this. I don't know if they're part of the bid and go bigger, you know, corporate structure. Or if this is something because it is so in the heart of the community, if we could go to the community and advertise that we want to do this and see if we have any local talent who could help us out. I don't know if that flies in the face of our procurement policy or if there's exceptions we can make, but I think this would be something that could build a lot of community pride, especially having local people involved in setting stone or concrete work. So I can't wait into how you do it, but just throwing it out there, that'd be nice. And I'm very happy to see this on here. And I won't be arguing against preapproving this, even though it it just feels like we're we're, you know, observing maybe next council's ability to manage a budget, but there's enough rationale here that I feel comfortable enough doing it today.
Mr. Campbell, do you care to comment on Ceta?
I think if you, through your worship, if you know some contractors that are small that might not normally bid through our process, have them contact us as we go through this, and we'll see how we can can accommodate them. Going through the online process is a requirement that I don't think it's that complicated, but we can help work with a smaller bidder to understand the system and participate.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Counselor Downer, you have a question?
Thank you, your worship. I'd just like to say that it's very good planning. I support it 100%. Good work on behalf of the engineering department. Well done.
Thank you, Counselor Downer. I have a question, if I may. It strikes me that there have been a number of capital projects that have been put aside simply because you couldn't get a bidder. It was way over budget and so on. So those projects move forward. I'm presuming end of year into 2023. Is that correct?
Your worship, the the balance of the projects, we will be discussing through the 2023 project year or budget process. This is not the entire list of work that needs to be done. It's just the start as always.
I'm shocked.
And then some of the projects that we haven't been able to do and want to do some modifications. Our CFO will be bringing a report forward in September with our mid-year capital review and might be making some adjustments to projects where we think we can get more value of approved money, but you'll see that in September.
Yeah, Mr. Campbell, look forward to the report. And it's all of these projects have an impact of quality of life, whether it's your sewer backing up or whether it's the flower garden in Little Lake Park. So thank you very much for being these forward. Thank you, Mr. Sobel, Mr. Flannery. As Counselor Downer said, it speaks good planning. So thank you for that. So with that, seeing just one more look around the room to see where does anybody has a question? Don't see any. So I will call the vote on this particular matter. All those in favor. Thank you very much. That carries. Next, we have, the next item is 6.2. It deals with council remuneration. Before I read the motion into the record, this Miss Van Veeck, there you are. Would you care to speak to this?
I'll summarize the report for everyone who's benefit. Sorry. And it's been several years since council of remuneration has been reviewed and adjusted. So in preparation for the upcoming term, we thought it was a good opportunity to take a look at that. So we asked our consultant, who's doing our town pay equity and job evaluation project to take a look at the remuneration. And reviewing this regularly is is essential. It's a way to recognize the work and time the council puts in, and it helps compensate for all the personal, family, life and career sacrifices that council makes. So we want to make sure that we are recognizing that and supportive of our residents and our council's contributions to Midland. And so we want to, we looked at the local comparators and to attract candidates and with a representative pool. So by compensating at the 60th percentile, as per the recommendation, it opens up that recommended pool of candidates in terms of people that may have been deterred previously by the sacrifice that it takes for the time for their family and for their own personal career to participate. So this report is, and you can see the consultants' recommendations attached in the report.
Thank you very much. So while I'll read the the motion into the record, and then we can have comments or questions from council. So it's moved by Counselor Post, seconded by Counselor Downer. The staff report CSR-2022-51 Council Remuneration for 2022 to 2026 Term dated August 10th, 2022 be received and one, that the comparative group use for this review be approved to the council remuneration align with the 60th percentile for the 2022-2026 term as recommended by the consultant. The mayor's annual compensation increased from $44,171.40 to $45,434.36 for deputy mayor annual compensation decrease from at $29,866.20 to $29,802.97. And five, councillors receive a compensation increase from $19,819.80 to $24,285.46 per annum. Six, that mayor and members of council shall be eligible to receive any cost of living adjustments equal to that as awarded by council for the town's non-union management employee group. Seven, that all benefits for the position of mayor and members of council continue to be offered under the town's council benefit plan at the expense of the town for voluntary enrollment. That this increase to council remuneration be implemented at the start of the 2022-2026 council term and that the required bylaw be passed. So counsel, that's the motion. Comments or questions on the matter, please. Counselor Gordon?
Thank you. I read through the report and the justification, and I don't particularly take issue with it. I I don't feel that we're undercompensated for what we do. I know I spend a lot of my personal time on this job, and I don't feel that I'm, you know, getting ripped off. But I can understand we also want to attract people and perhaps that difference of $4,000 or $5,000 will make the difference. Of all the recommendations here, the one that I'd like to see us remove from here or not accept is the COLA, the cost of living adjustment. Historically, council goes out of their way by this very process that we're talking about tonight to not vote themselves raises while in office. You do that for the next term. And if you're elected again, then you benefit from that. If you're not, then you've passed that on to the the next crew. By enacting this, we effectively every year when we collectively vote to issue a cost of living increase to our senior staff who don't have collective agreements, we would be doing so, knowing that whatever we gave them, we'd be giving ourselves. The cost of living impact is a very real cost that's borne by people who live off the wage that they that they receive for their work they do. I don't believe any of us live off of our wage here, and the fact that a loaf of bread or some gas costs more, when all of our council expenses are already covered as expenses, the fact that those sort of ancillary costs to live costs more don't change the remunerating, or they shouldn't, in my mind, change the remuneration we get for our job. Nothing but our job gets any harder because bread costs more, gas costs more. And it costs to go to someplace or cover it for us anyway. So while I understand this may have just been copy and paste, you know, they did the report. This is what they would do for staff. Well, we're kind of like staff part-time. I disagree with a COLA increase where council effectively votes themselves raises every every year for four years. And also that we don't need the benefit of a COLA increase. It would just be gratuitous and probably causes all kinds of grief and drama in the community. So I don't know if it would take a friendly amendment or a motion, or if we vote on these things individually, but I would be content to accept this recommendation, except for the cost of living increase and for the rationality just provided.
Thank you, Counselor. Madam Clerk, comment?
Thank you, your worship. If Counselor Gordon would like to make an amendment, you would need a seconder, and then council can vote on the amendment.
Hey, Madam Clerk. You seconding, Councilman? You, so we now have a request to amend. Who wishes, if anybody, to second Counselor Gordon's motion on item six, which is the cost of living? Counselor Post, thank you. You have a seconder. So your amendment is basically to strike item six, Counselor Gordon, from the main motion?
That's correct. Thank you.
So Madam Clerk, I believe we now have an amended motion on the floor to discuss. Sorry. There's an item six, cost of living. Yes. So comments or questions with respect to the amended motion, Counselor Maine?
Thank you. I definitely going to want to hear from Miss Van Veeck has to say on this one, but just before we get to that, I too share the concern with Counselor Gordon because that was the whole point in this term was we were trying to decouple the council remuneration from. We had some concern over tying that to the non non-union membership management annual thing. And so I like the concept of how you decouple it. But what do you put it in replace with? There's a suggestion, I guess, from Counselor Gordon that you do nothing and it's zero. So cost of living adjustment. So we basically every term or every second term, we would adjust the rates accordingly. I was just curious, if Miss Van Veeck could kind of answer that question about how do you address that without tying these two together? How do you decouple them? And is it something that other municipalities do have a simple formula for cost of living increases already baked into their council remuneration? So any of your thoughts would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Miss Van Veeck?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, through you to Counselor Maine. And I did reach out to local municipalities to see what they were doing for COLA specifically. I received, I sent out 12 requests. I received 10 back. All 10 do provide COLA to their council. And the reason for that is for the cost of living adjustment for the day-to-day, yes, the cost of bread, the cost of gas, everything else that goes along with that. But it also helps keep that percentile intact as other municipalities are providing it. That band grows again, that gap between Midlands compensation and other municipalities. So it could catch up every term that we review this. But providing COLA does allow for that to kind of mirror along and move along with it. Currently, there is no specific formula. So there are some options that, yes, we review it annually as we look at the management non-union that aren't covered under collective agreement terms. Or we can build in a step already where we look at the next four years and pre-approve now, you know, maybe that's a 1% each year so that it removes that conflict. If you're talking about that at future dates.
Thank you very much. Councilman, is that answer your question? Further questions from Miss Van to be? I understand when looking at Spanish, looking at the compensation, the bylaw that would address this, that compensation has for counselors has not been looked at since 2003. Is that correct?
The bylaw, yes, it looks like the review, the compensation has been reviewed, but the bylaw has not been updated since.
I see. So there have been changes in compensation. I see. So there have been changes in compensation since the bylaw was enacted. And I think what I heard you say was we can do a cost of living if we wish to maintain the 60 percentage, 60th percentile, excuse me. We can either do it retroactively. The next council rather will do it, can do it retroactively, or we can do it proactively here as a set piece or or otherwise. But those are basically two options. I personally like the fact, and I know other councils do this. That the council today, the outgoing council today gets to set the standard, so to speak. Because once you're the new council sits, then it's almost intuitive that's conflict of interest to be setting your own compensation. And I think that may also be true, and I tend to agree with councillor Gordon actually. That it is the cost of living is basically in setting cost of living for management, not management on union and tying your compensation to that. Then that basically you are putting yourself back into conflict because you're now dealing with your own compensation. So I'll just leave that. I'll see councillor Cunningham as a commenter or question. Councillor Cunningham.
I think it's, it seems to be as simple as six of one half a dozen of another. If we are tying us to the 60th percentile. And 10 out of 10 respondents were increasing by cost of living increases. And four years when we look at our compensation and we compare it to the other municipalities, we will see that theirs have gone up by one percent a year. And then as we go out, we will vote to do the same thing. So it may, from an optic standpoint, be more digestible to not have this COLA clause in there. But in effect, what we'll have is in four years, the next council will look around again, say, see that everybody else has gone up that four percent and vote that increase. So I could see this from an optic standpoint, being more digestible to take it out and just leave it as looking at it with the outgoing council, but in in effect, it's still going to be the same increase in in pay.
Thank you, councillor. That's that is in fact the effect of staying in the 60th percentile. Councillor Shewski saw your hand.
I think your worship. I do agree with councillor Gordon and my mic seems to be nice and hot. I I do agree with councillor Gordon in a sense. But having said that, the town of Midland doesn't set the rate of inflation. We don't, we don't set the the cost of living adjustment rate. So it's not like, you know, it comes to us at council and we go, you know, the cost of living adjustment rate is two percent. And we go, hey, why don't we go six? It's just not how that works. So I think the numbers are set and they're done by a whole bunch of smart people sitting around the table based on a whole bunch of different prices and stuff. And I think it's a, it's a way to keep things fair and give fair increases annually. I understand that the optics may not be different and some people sitting up here may not be living off the council wage. But we're not talking about us anymore. This is the next council and I think it would be inappropriate to assume that they have the financial means to just take these, you know, cost of living increases on the chin and just have the extra money to pay for it. So I don't want to make that assumption for someone else. If the people in the next council don't need the extra money, they can donate it to a local charity. I think I will, you know, accept the cost of living as it stands in the report.
Thank you, councillor. Any other comments or questions before I call the question on the amended? The amended motion, which is basically the main motion minus item six, which is the cost of living question. I would say though, then it's one way. We can either do it as a cost of living adjustment, or we can do it as a catch up to 60th percentile. But the motion on the floor is to remove item six. So I will call the question, the motion being the main motion with removal of the cost of living. All those in favor. Thank you, all those against. The amended motion is defeated. I see councillor Post, you wish to speak to the main motion.
Now, my ear and it's flickering. So did I have a hand up?
You voted no.
Yes, I did.
Is what I saw. Yeah, is that, is that, is that correct?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. So we're back to the main motion. Comments or questions with respect to the main motion? Seeing none on favor of the main motion. Thank you. That carries. So next item on the agenda is six point four. Which again, this Mr. Sorry, Miss Van De Beek's area and it's basically a report CSR dash two zero two two dash five four. Flexible work arrangement policy. Miss Van De Beek, would you wish to speak to this?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. To summarize this report, as we all know, the last few years have set unprecedented ways of doing work. And a lot of our staff were already doing a tremendous job at adapting through COVID. And we adopted some various levels of flexibility to, for safety reasons and also for work-life balance reasons. And that's something that we would like to continue to offer our staff as a means of being a competitive employer. And recognizing all the benefits of having a flexible work arrangement, not only for our staff, but also for the administration, for the municipality itself and for our residents. So the report that I fishbored, I'm requesting that that policy be reviewed and that we be approved to do try that out on a 12 month pilot process. 12 month pilot. And in 12 months, I would report back with how that pilot project has gone. And at that point, we can make a recommendation that that would be a full time arrangement or not.
Thank you very much. Just before we get into questions. I'll read the motion into the record. It's moved by councillor Downer and seconded by councillor Shewski. The staff report CSR dash two zero two two dash five four. Flexible work arrangement policy dated August the 10th, 2022 be received and one. The council approved the flexible work arrangement policy attached as appendix A to this report and two. That the flexible work arrangement policy be approved on a 12 month pilot basis from the date of policy rollout and three. The staff report back to council upon completion of the pilot program. Council, that's the motion. Comments or questions for Miss Van De Beek? Councillor Downer.
Yes, I read the report. It's very interesting. We're in interesting times. I think, I think you're going to see more and more companies and organizations go this route. My primary concern is with the timing of it. I kind of like to get some feedback from our CAO on what his opinion of this is. Could we, could we have some comments from him?
Mr. Deno, Mr. Deno.
Certainly, I threw you, your worship, to councillor Downer. Yes, I think first of all, I'd really like to certainly give credit to Tamara and her team for the recommendation she's bringing forward, not only for this, but for council remuneration and for the other reports that you're seeing. I think since she's joined us, she's really put a lot of effort to make sure that we're staying competitive as as an organization, which is really necessary and a really important part of our sustainability strategy that this council has been pushing. The administration very hard on. We want to be, you know, a sustainable organization that can support the town and make sure that we can offer all the services that are necessary, but also, you know, bring those, those things that are being asked of by council to fruition, finding the financial capability to do that, building, you know, a capital plan that that is certainly one we can support. Creating better reserve capacity. All of that has to be done by skilled people. And in order to attract them, we need a flexible policy in today's environment to do that. So certainly sooner than later, something we'd like to to offer. We will certainly make sure we have continued discussions with our bargaining units. We have four bargaining units. We want to make sure they're comfortable with and then we've had some preliminary discussions with them. So I'll certainly respect Mara's recommendation on the timing of this, but it is certainly something that not only Midland is doing, but almost every other municipality is adjusting to a flexible work arrangement. Because it's such a competitive environment for for staff in the public sector.
Thank you, Mr. Deno.
Follow up, sir, if you don't mind, Mr. Mayor. Say you're going for a 12, a 12 month trial. And you're three months into the, into the program and it's not working out too good. Do you have the availability to go back to the original scheduling? Or would you be locked in with the unions to the commitment of 12 months?
Miss Van De Beek.
Are you, Mr. Mayor? Thank you, councillor Downer. We have built into the program the ability for continuous monitoring and the ability to, on an individual basis, review those requests and amend them if they are not working for that individual. So that allows us to do that either by mass applications for it, or if it's, you know, one or two situations that aren't aligning with that strategy, that we can review those and amend them or repeal that arrangement at that time for that individual.
Well, thank you very much. It was a very well written report. Well done.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Other questions for Miss Van De Beek on this item? Not seeing any, then I will call the question. All those in favor with motion. Thank you. Thank you. That carries. So next item we have again, a report from Miss Van De Beek. Dealing with quality of work-life program, HR policies. Miss Van De Beek.
Thank you. It's a continuation of the quality of work-life program. It includes a flexible policy, but it actually extends beyond that. It's really our commitment to our employees to value that work-life balance and create a competitive market where people are able to adjust and make work a priority, but also make their families and their their lives a priority as well, which increases retention and engagement and productivity across the board. So I'm upon my arrival, I've been slowly looking at a lot of the non-union. So these two policies are specifically related to non-union employees as vacation and overtime and excess hours is dealt with in the various collective agreements. So for the non-union perspective, I wanted to review these policies as part of that program review and made some recommendations on how to make us more competitive, but also to really minimize some of that liability that we currently have by having looser policy parameters around overtime, for example, where the the banking limits are higher, where they can be paid out. And then also for balancing our requirement to compensate our employees for work and today's reality, because we're all tethered to our cell phones or to our laptops and we're responding to text messages or taking phone calls. So we, we are, we are required to compensate our employees whenever they are working and that's considered work. So this is a way for us to recognize those commitments that our staff are making and still value valuing that work-life balance for them. So we're compensating them and also allowing them some flexibility to compensate for that and balance on it with some adjusted vacation times that's more competitive to the current reality out there.
Thank you very much. And so what I'll do now is read the motion into the record and questions for Miss Van De Beek. So it's moved by councillor Main, seconded by councillor Gordon. The staff report CSR dash two zero two two dash fifty five. Quality of work-life program, HR policies dated August 10th, 2022 be received for information and one. The council approved the vacation policy for non-union staff. Two, the council approved the hours of work and excess hours policy for non-union staff. And three, that both policies take effect January 1, 2023. So council, you've heard the motion. Comments or questions for Miss Van De Beek? Councillor Main, and then councillor Gordon.
I want to thank you, Miss Van De Beek, for the great report. It's a real shame. You had a great opportunity to use the town slogan, the town's motto, persecue qualitativi in pursuit of quality life. And we had a perfect report on quality life. Forgot to plug that in. That's a rookie mistake, but that's all right. I just want to thank you for the report. Burnout, we're seeing that across industries through the pandemic is a huge concern. And our workers work hard and they play hard. So thank you for the attention to detail on some of these policies. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Councillor Gordon, please.
Thanks. I too want to recognize the reality. Especially in my efforts, I mean, because I do a lot of my council work in the evenings and on weekends and I will queue up emails and send them off. And it's difficult to stage when they leave on your phone. It's easier to do on your computer. And I'll send things with no expectation. I even prefix some of my messages that way, with no expectation of a response after hours. And yet we have dedicated staff that will take their time and respond. Always thank them, but tell them they don't, I wasn't expecting it. So I think it's really important that as an employer, we enshrine that work-life balance policy. And not only put it on the word, but to put it into action. So I committed to doing this when we first started talking about this and I think I've cut back. I guess the CAO would know. Whether I have or not, but not just talk it, but actually do it. So for my commitment, you know, I'll try and really keep those emails sitting queued up, waiting to come Monday morning rather than over the weekends and the evenings. But I do want to call out and appreciate the dedication of our staff who, who I lean on for intel or information, or why is this happening or why isn't that happening? And I get relatively quick responses. Not always the answer I want or I'm looking for, but I do get something back and I do appreciate that. So for my part, I'm going to commit to try to uphold this policy. And feel free to call me on it. So if you get one of these late night poop messages from councillor Gordon asking about something, feel free to scold me and I won't take it personally at all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor. Yes, I think we're very fortunate to have the staff that we do that are take their mat, their jobs very seriously. And I hadn't heard about this play hard business, but it seems, it seems they need to catch up on that, I guess. Any further questions for staff from Miss Van De Beek? Seeing none, then I'll call the question. All those in favor. Thank you very much. Thank you, Miss Van De Beek, for all the hard work and I'll send a memo asking where all this play is happening later on.
Thank you.
And also just like at this point, I forgot to do this earlier. I'd like to thank Mr. Farr very much for his dedication to revamping the planet. I know there's a lot of work has gone into your division and it's not necessarily always evident that it's appreciated, but I can tell you that from this chair, it's very much appreciated and thank you for that. So moving to next item is bylaws and we have moved by councillor Post. Seconded by councillor, seconded by councillor Shewski, that the following bylaws, bylaw 2022 dash four three. Transfer payment agreement with Her Majesty the Queen and right of Ontario is represented by the Minister of Infrastructure for an investing and investing in Canada infrastructure program, ICIP, Green Stream Initiative. Sorry, Greens, Greens, Green Stream Project. Bylaw 2022 dash 44, amend bylaw 2021 dash 23 being a bylaw to establish a speed limit in parks and trails for the town of Midland. Bylaw 2022 dash 45, remuneration for mayor and members of council and to repeal bylaw 2003 dash five nine. Be passed and enacted. Comments or questions with respect to the bylaws? Councillor Gordon.
Thanks. Mine revolves around that amendment to the parks and trails. When we pass the, you know, we could just call it the e-bike bylaw. Because it's, you know, garnered a lot of community interest and partly of our own making, because we did a terrible job, I think, of communicating what difference between, you know, a pedelec is and an e-bike, because people tend to kind of throw e-bikes to them. But that being said, we purposely excluded talk about the speed limit at the time, because it was just too weird. Plus, the speed limit being proposed, I think even councillor Cunningham tried it. And almost, you know, it came to a dead stop and fell off her bicycle. So it wasn't, you were having a hard, you were having a hard time making the speed limit happen. But at any rate.
Go that fast, councillor Gordon.
Well, at any rate, it like Mr. Reich held committed to coming back and revisiting it and boom, here it is. I guess my, my concern remains. You know, because obviously it's virtually unenforceable. This is the honor system. This is not like a, you know, putting a 40 kilometer and a normally 50 kilometer hour on the roads sign, because the police actually will enforce that, albeit infrequently. But, you know, it is a reality, it is enforceable. The reality and to everybody is we're not policing the trails the way we are roads. Our bylaw officers, as well intentioned and well trained as they are, don't have the legal authority to flag you down, pull you over, compel you to provide ID and give you a ticket. It's frustrating and OPV, of course, will probably the lowest thing on the totem pole next to a barking dog is going to be going on our trails and with a radar gun and doing beam for the spandex, whatever they call them. Going on our trails and with a radar gun and doing beam for the spandex, whatever they call them, in the newspaper, the spandex crowd, which seems to be taking the brunt of the abuse here. So I guess, yeah, we're going to put this speed limit up and enshrine it in a bylaw, but it's, is it actually enforceable? And if it isn't, then I mean, why are we doing it? That's my question, I suppose.
Mr. Barr?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, councillor Gordon. Speaking with the supervisor of bylaw today, we're having this exact conversation. So the, the 20 kilometer an hour limit does provide a reference point that has some meaning. With respect to the types of vehicles that might be permitted. We asked some kind of common sense questions like, what's a, what's a kind of higher end speed for a bicycle, 20, 20 kilometers? How fast can you go on a, a ped assisted bike, maximum of 25 kilometers? Fast can you go on an e-bike? And I start to get into 30 plus kilometers an hour. So while the 20 kilometers an hour may be difficult to enforce, it does provide a practical reference point for people. Speaking of someone that's walked on a, a winter trail where there's a 20 kilometer limit posted and snowmobiles are permitted. The snowmobilers are especially well-behaved group and they tend to honor the limits. I think that the glue that's going to hold this bylaw together is, is the kind of sense of civic responsibility among residents. I think that's Midlands bylaw regime is generally like an education-based regime. And this, this puts it in writing. It, it provides a reference in the event that enforceable number is required and you run into problems. Is this going to solve and the problem completely? And is the town going to send people out to put radar guns on vehicles as they go past? I don't think that anybody expects that's a practical solution. But for the extremes of behavior and to provide a reference point for managing the trail system, I think this is a necessity.
Thank you, Mr. Barr. So. With that, I'll call the question then. Sorry, councillor Maine, you wish to speak?
Thank you, worship. Just on that point, I know there's a lot of comments, a lot of chatter, letters to the editor, whatever, on, on the trail system. And it basically all comes down to trail etiquette. So we enact a speed limit, which, you know, there's the enforcement piece, but there's the education and encouragement piece. And it's really just to get promoting good neighborliness and people being kind to each other like we always are. But with the trail, I think we're, we are having a little bit of growing pains with more and more people on the trails. Fast speeds and, and low-speed walkers and they're creating a bit of a conflict. It's not necessarily the same magnitude of danger as roadways and road accidents, which are, can be fatal, but it's still a nuisance and people want to rec, recreate. Safely and comfortably. So the onus is going to be on the town to, again, to try to delineate what an e-bike, e-motorcycle, pedelec is. But also trying to encourage slow, safe speeds and respect and courtesy to all trail users. So I think that we're trying to move in that direction and continue to promote. Trail etiquette, I guess is the best way you can say it. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. And for those who have been suggesting that council banned e-bikes. That is true, but they did not ban pedelecs, which most seniors who've been some, feel somewhat aggrieved by. But they perceive to be a ban. Most seniors are driving pedelecs and not e-bikes. And if you happen to look at your Midland Mirror town page, last edition, there is a very, very informative graphic, which shows what an e-bike looks like and what a pedelec looks like. So, and if you really are interested and want to dive deeply, there is a bylaw on the Parks Trails bylaw. You can look at that. It defines two of them. But for those out there, I think we've banned e-bikes, or sorry, pedelecs, that's not the case. So, thank you. With that, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Thank you, that motion carries. You know, have a motion by councillor Gordon, a second by councillor Cunningham, that bylaw 2022-46 being a bylaw to adopt proceedings in special media council. Held August the 10th, 2022 be passed and enacted. All those in favor? Or sorry, comments or questions? So, big pardon. None? Those in favor? Thank you. I'd just like to take a moment, if you will indulge me, to hark back to a comment that councillor George McDonald made. At the time, we approved a site plan for Jarrett. In which he said, when you have your grand opening, be sure to have ice cream on hand because I'll be there to have my ice cream. Now, I don't know whether George was there or not, but the ice cream was. So I hope you were there, George. And second thing is that tomorrow night, there's a motion, sorry, a. An open house at the MCC for the geopark. And I would invite everybody who's interested in the geopark and its potential impact on our area. To go to that open house. It's from 4 to 7. It's in Rotary Hall and it's at the Midlands Community Centre. So with that. Let me just make sure. Here, yes.
Sorry, your worship. You just said it's at the Midland Community Centre. I think it's the MCC, is it not? The Cultural Centre.
Cultural Centre, beg your pardon.
Yep, Rotary Hall of the Cultural Centre.
Thank you. Thank you very much, councillor Gordon. So finally, I have a motion by councillor Olszewski moved by councillor Prost. That the special media of council adjourn at. 5:55 PM. All those in favor? Thank you, council. It's almost time to go home for supper, I think.